Welcome to the City of Klamath Falls, Monday, March 15th, 2021. For our work session, 6:00 PM, Comprehensive Annual Financial Review with fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. 1.1 Audit Review of Comprehensive Annual Financial Reports for the year ending in June 30th, 2020, and for the City of Klamath Falls and Urban Renewal Agency. Marina and Company Representative, Representative Tanya Moffett presented information, will be presenting. And go ahead.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, I am happy to present the June 30, 2020, audited financial statement. This is a special large tax community participation in. So any time you're going to do it, spend over $760,000 on federal and county. Then you have to go and do the, do the clinical audit. Most of that is compliance related. We don't look at what compliance requires or they suffer different programs to ensure that compliance can comply. And so here in the group, we started funding. The city expended $7,699,400, $400,000. And we had no findings on the clinical audit. Things that sort of been made the program that we talked about, still in progress, the largest program. There are different tiers and that's the auditors. And the program that we talked about, according to the program, that was 6.3 million, probably 6.4 million dollars. And that's $7,699,000. So it's funny, you know, in terms of the number that happened. And we had no findings on the clinical audit, so the government audit, the board reports that we have seen that people are. The official, if we're thinking anything in the compliance, the time for clinical audit. We also are for some things that are not reconciling, that the state wants to ensure access from that and to be available on there. And the business is included in the state of the audit and the support required by the organization. For the state of the audit, we're working on these 209. And for the urban renewal agency, we're working on these 45, so we're having to make that happen. So the authority of the office and state, the rights and security things that they want, or they can be available on their clinical audit. When there's being a bit of a lot of things, so for example, if I were to say, one day, sure, if I'm running a business high, they can have things that either has, has a key interest or having to sort out, but they're on the ground where they've been sort of on. Make sure that the bank or store is attached, like some funds from two days, or maybe two blocks. We also look at, we look at, we're just watching, so something has total, a lot of meaning associated. It's very specific to how many days before that they're being, and how, how many notices are coming, after two notices. We don't need to have things like that as well. One of the ones that we also touch for is public contracts, because it's been so far, it's been so long. So the city is clearly large targets. If those targets are set out publicly, so that others can get on them. And that this is supposed to be proper channels for collecting the contract, which is what we're doing. And so we look at that for both the city and for urban renewal agency. We had no findings, really, in the origin of the standards, having, that didn't, compliance, you know, compliance. When we did the audit, there was, there was a transcript on the audit book. And we had no financial, nothing, nothing, any reports that we asked. There were no specific points of the audit. And there were no reasons maybe we're common policy, that's 10-15, because they can look at the things that were 2019. And compare it to the things that we're showing financial, they didn't know we were turning models to apples. There are some common, there's like, there's some things, there are some things, there are some things. So my start was a small one, and I'm working with a lot of staff. So kind of the, the kind of, so there's, 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 there's a lot of, you don't know how many, there's, 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 there's. So there's a small amount of common, of, 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 of. There's also common things that happen, so that in addition to that. So the reason of that is, is that you don't know when employees are coming, so they might take it now, or they might take it any day. And so if they take it in the year, and the audit might have a cost of a day and three, or maybe a salary and three, or maybe some decisions or something like that. People, that benefit might actually know that I don't know, um, for, 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 for. But what's important is I never think, nothing, others do this, or others do this, on, 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 on. And another, actually, the, 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 we don't know exactly how long it's part of the back. So sometimes they start last, you know, here, and then others, and maybe all the last, and then, if anyone will have it. So then actually, we call it like, as in, and they, it's, it's created, but that, and then, but we don't exactly know how long it's been. So that's another, that's another. And then we also have the last other person, for, 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 for. And that is where, where they can pay for, or allow for employees at all times, but a lot of, some of those, those, they can pay. And have, and, 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 and. So they, they think the overall rate that the city has to pay is a little bit of a liability, but it's good. And then the last, and the largest, and, 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 and. And the next thing to my ability is not often that the city calculates, because they're not, the state actually doesn't calculate. And they often ask me, um, why does that, do you think, and what's that? And so that is for large, for, 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 for. The one thing to note is that as long as the state is making it, requires compensation, theoretically, that's just, uh, that's, that's, that's. So I'd like to draw, I'd like to back this, type that as something that everything's here, new, uh, into my, uh, team. Things can go wrong, and, and, so, um, that is, it's, 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 and, 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 and. And it's, um, it is, um, to 45, uh, the, 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 the. And it is, this is, you know, that's nine hundred thousand. It's about half way down on the page, um, right above, um, the, 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 the. And that next thing to my ability is not going to happen, that's, that's, that's.
Getting, making sure that we had a computer so we were able to get in to be able to review with read-only access so that we could go in and look at the transaction. And that saved city staff time because we could go and pull reports and pull things ourselves without having to have them take a copy of the report and send it to us. And then we were able to, with all this lovely technology that we have now, we were able to also do screen sharing. So we were able to go in and do what we consider our walkthroughs, where we walk through transactions and we see exactly how individuals go from one point to another point. We were able to go and do screen shares so we could see how the employees were inputting the transactions and how that workflow went through. And so, we really want to thank the city team for allowing us to be able to do that virtually and not have to potentially jeopardize everybody by coming out there. For the city, there's also a schedule of compliance with the rate of revenue covenants. And that report is on page 183 of the conference and annual financial report. That is a report on the wastewater revenue refunding bonds compliance. And we had no findings there as well. That was a clean report with no findings. So that's essentially my report. Does anybody have any specific questions or any specific areas you would like me to talk about?
Anybody?
I have a question if you can write with me.
Sure, sure, City Manager.
Just more hypothetical, with your other clients, is that $16 million pension, is that about what you're seeing? Because I know it's made up based on our number of tier ones and tier twos and ops, but I'm just curious if that's about what you're seeing those ranges at.
That, that is about what we're seeing ranges at for cities your size. So if you're comparing larger entities, then theirs are typically higher. It also depends on the makeup, like you were saying, Ethan, of how the age of the employees. Because if they're in tier one or they're in ops, that makes a little bit of a difference there too because, you know, ones have gotten higher benefits essentially. And so, it depends on the makeup of the individual cities. So, but it is very common right now unfortunately. The other place that I would suggest that you guys look and read is the management discussions and analysis. I know it's not audited, so a lot of auditors are like, "Don't put people towards that because it's not audited." But we do look at it, we make sure that the information agrees with the financial statements and the parts that we do audit. But the management discussion and analysis is a great place because it talks about what's going on in the city, the economics in the city. It also shows the last two years and it compares, okay, last year it was this, this year it's this. It increased because of this or decreased because of this. So it is a great snapshot of how the city is doing compared to June 30th of 2019 and June 30th of 2020. And I can talk about specific statements if you'd like me to. Or answer any questions. I know it's probably a little bit shorter than some years, but when everything's perfect and everything's fine and there's no finding, I like these reports.
Great.
Urban renewal then?
The Urban Renewal Agency. For the Urban Renewal Agency, we, our opinion is limited to the basic financial statements as well as the required supplementary information in the financial statement. And we applied limited procedures to the management discussion and analysis, or that's some DNA. And we don't express an opinion on that. The agency's introductory section of the report has not been audited by us and accordingly, we expressed no opinion on that information. For the Urban Renewal Agency, we had no findings for the Oregon minimum standards as well. So it was a clean opinion or unmodified.
I was really happy when you changed that to unmodified instead of, it used to be unqualified, right?
Yep, it used to be unqualified and it was very confusing because people thought that, well, what, what does it mean? Qualified meant that there was a problem and unqualified meant that there was not a problem. But I do like the terminology change there for unmodified versus modified. There are a lot of accounting standard changes that are going to be coming up in the future. Some of those include leases, there's going to be some changes with leases. And then they're looking, the Government Accounting Standards Board is currently looking at changing the financial reporting model. Our firm replied to their proposed changes. We are hoping that some of those changes will not go through that they are proposing because it will cost cities some money to reprogram some of their accounting software as well as potentially, we're going to have to make some changes legislatively at the state of Oregon level so that we can comply with the Government Accounting Standards Board if it goes through as proposed at the federal level. So, be kind of on the lookout that the financial statements might change between, it's about three years out, almost four years out at this point, if they stay on their proposed timeline. They're also going to be changing the revenue recognition rules as well. And so, the financial statements will be looking a little bit different in the next probably five years. So, just kind of keep that in mind. The Government Accounting Standards Board has been very busy for the last few years.
Go ahead, City Manager.
Yeah, I would just like to take the opportunity to thank Jessica and Lisa and Amber and her, all her team over there who put this together. Because I know, it's one of these documents that you help and there are probably five or six of us who've read it. But it is, it's, it's very important. I joke that I don't think anybody reads it all the way through, cover to cover, except a few. But they've done a great job and it's very refreshing to hear that we received that without anything, knowing what a struggle this year has been. So, it was excellent. I just want to thank them publicly.
Thank you, Jessica, and thank you Andrew and Kathy for being here as well.
Yeah, they did an amazing job.
Great, thank you.
Well, we have really appreciated working with the city of Palomar Falls. And if you ever have any questions for us, please feel free to reach out to myself or anyone on our team.
Very good, Tanya. Thank you so much for all of your efforts. Appreciate it.
Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. So, go ahead. Councilman Dodson?
I was waiting goodbye.
Oh. Bye-bye. All right, that concludes our work session.
Mayor Carol Westfall hereby called to order this council meeting on Monday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Roll call, please.
Counselor Tocco? Counselor Dodson?
Here.
Counselor Blaine?
Here.
Counselor Andres?
Here.
Counselor Stewart is absent.
Move to excuse.
Second.
Hall and favor say aye.
Aye.
Call the post. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today we have a presentation. Jim Chatterdon.
Thank you, Mayor Westfall, and good evening, and City Manager Trevesky, and members of the City Council, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I am Jim Chatterdon.
Can you make sure that podium mic is on, the red dot? Thank you.
And I am representing the Promote Klamath PAC Political Action Committee tonight, which was formed earlier this year for the express purpose of educating the citizens throughout Klamath County about ballot measure eighteen dash one twenty, which will be on this May's ballot, special election on May eighteenth. So without further ado, I have a short presentation, and then just maybe three or four minutes, and then I'll open it up for any questions you may have. Thank you, City Manager. Okay, go ahead and flip. Quick, I'll just do a quick read on the, go to the first slide there. There we go. This is the ballot question that will be presented to the voters of Klamath County. Quote, shall Klamath County increase the transient room tax to eleven percent and apply those proceeds to tourism promotion and county services? Unquote. You want to flip the, just real quickly, going to the next slide, thank you. You know, there is, we're currently at eight percent. This is a recommendation to take that to eleven percent. This is that visitors, transient room lodging visitors to Klamath County, to all lodging places, most lodging places for stays of under thirty days would pay this increase, and the increase would be split seventy thirty, with seventy percent going to tourism-related facilities and promotion, and thirty percent of that revenue to county services. Go ahead. Real quickly, why, why increase the lodging tax? Because research throughout Oregon and the Oregon Tourism Commission has shown that for every dollar in tourism promotion, it generates a hundred and fifty-seven dollars in return in new visitor spending to that destination. One of the things that's shown that in terms of economic impact is that recreation and tourism have really grown and become large economic drivers to Klamath County. Last year, upwards of three hundred and eighty-four million dollars in economic benefit to throughout the county in direct and indirect spending. And just to put that into perspective, that's, you know, more economic impact than we're seeing here at, from Kingsley, Skylakes, and Medical, and also the secondary education through Oregon Tech. This economic impact that comes from tourism and recreation is currently supporting about forty-four hundred jobs, and it provides economic impact throughout all of Klamath County, not just Klamath Falls. So that includes five incorporated and eight unincorporated areas. These TRT dollars, or transient room tax dollars, support, you know, infrastructure projects currently. Over three-quarters of a million dollars at the fairgrounds. That, of course, as we know, the city of Klamath Falls has the Crater Lake Klamath Regional Airport, and so it supports much-needed improvements at, and ongoing improvements at the airport. And it also supports recreational development such as Spence Mountain and other trail systems. Again, as I mentioned earlier, every dollar that is spent on promotion returns a hundred and fifty-seven dollars in visitor spending. What that will do for our local tourism, yes, City Council, Dodson.
What, what's that for Klamath County?
That's a statewide number. So I don't have a statewide number, but, excuse me, that's the statewide number from Travel Oregon.
Right. You've never done that.
No, we don't have that for, for Klamath. So anyway, that, by increasing the lodging taxes that come in, it, it provides our Klamath region with a more competitive spending platform to be more competitive when we're promoting our destination versus other areas. It also is going to help with recovery efforts going forward, coming out of this COVID situation. Economically, throughout Oregon, tourism and hospitality and lodging was down fifty-eight percent last year, and Klamath fared better, but still took a big hit. So additional lodging tax dollars will support a recovery effort in the next few years. In terms of how we compare, Klamath County sits today at eight percent, and many of our regional peers are between eleven and fifteen percent. The national average is fourteen point nine on these lodging taxes. To give you an idea, Grants Pass is at twelve percent, Jackson County is at eleven. City of Portland, which isn't really in our regional set, but they just voted, their city council voted last Wednesday night to go to sixteen percent. Even our friends to the east of us in Lake County are at thirteen point eight. Currently, lodging taxes collected are about two and a half million dollars. Here's the pie chart in terms of how that is broken out and allocated. What you're seeing here is the sort of the light blue slice there represents the piece that goes to tourism promotion, which is twenty percent of that two and a half million dollars. That's again, sort of low relative to most other areas where thirty-five to fifty percent is more typical. So I'll give you a, a good example. I think I may have it in a future, yeah, let's just keep going because I have it in a future slide. One thing that I was going to note is that travelers typically expect to pay these lodging taxes and these lodging bed fees, and they're not really making travel decisions and booking based on what those fees are. As an example, you know, we have Bend and sort of Central Oregon as an example, where their tourism agency is funded at forty-three percent of their, they actually get, there's nine, a little over nine million dollars collected in Deschutes County. And so, and there, you can see what their rate is in the city of Bend. rate is in the city of Bend, and their share is higher. So, it's sort of a double, a double advantage that they've got going. So, they've got a larger share of the lodging revenues, and they're also, their rate is higher. So, you can see this leverage effect where it puts about $4 million a year into that local tourism agency, and they can do a lot more to promote their destination with that higher rate. And with that, I will answer any questions that, City Councilwoman Blaine.
Councilwoman Blaine.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Can you explain a little bit what the basis is for the 3% increase? You, you said that was a recommendation. What was the basis for that? Is that a regional analysis of what's around? How did you come to that 3%?
Yeah, it, it's, well, there was no big, deep analysis. As you know, we were going to go forward with the TID, or Tourism Improvement District Concept, and that was the percentage that we were going to go forward with. And so, when we pivoted over to a model of lifting the lodging taxes, we just sort of carried that forward. It just seemed with, you know, our peer set being all higher in all areas around us, that there seemed to be very little sort of risk, if you will, of going up to that 11%.
Yeah, because that still seems pretty low, based on the, the regional comparison.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
And so, the, from, we have other members of the PAC here, representing lodging and downtown, and if you have other questions for them, we can address those. I guess the ask of the City Council this evening is, the, the PAC would be looking for a letter of support, if that's possible, from the City Council in support of this measure.
City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure that the council knows, I anticipated the ask. So, I did some research on this. I'm relying upon ORS 260.432. This is a synopsis from the League of Oregon Cities. While on the job during working hours, public employees are prohibited from soliciting any money, influence, service, or other things of value or otherwise promoting or opposing, number one, any political committee; number two, the nomination or election of a candidate; number three, the gathering of signatures on an initiative, referendum, or recall petition; number four, the adoption of a measure; or five, the recall of a public office holder. For the purposes of this law, an elected official is not considered a public employee. However, under no circumstances should a public employee or elected official use public funds or resources to promote or oppose any of the above activities. So, as individuals.
So, point of clarification, we can provide our name.
Correct.
Because that has no financial, we just could not vote to give them $2,500 to help their PAC.
Correct. Also, as another example, when the ask was, sorry, I'm going to step right on your toes for this, you anticipated it. When the ask is for the letter, you would not be able to ask staff to prepare a letter and circulate it.
We would.
You, you would have to do that amongst yourselves, and there couldn't be any.
That makes sense.
City involvement. I just want to make sure that's clear, because typically, a lot of times, when we're asked to support things within the community that are not of a political nature, that's how it breaks down, is a letter of support prepared by staff.
We could also ask them to write the letter of support, and then us review it, and.
As long as it's just kept amongst all of you who are electeds.
Or approach individually.
That also would be fine. I just want to make sure you guys know your parameters.
Thank you for clarification.
Any more questions?
I did some math.
Go ahead.
This, this is going to do about a million dollars additional revenue.
It will, at some point. I, I was thinking at least about three-quarters of a million dollars. When we were calculating the TID, we were using roughly $250,000 lift for every one point of TRT. So, if we're going up three, that's about three-quarters of a million dollars. And then with the 70-30 split between the county, that would put about 500 million, excuse me, yeah, that'd be great, $500 million into tourism's, no, that would put about $500,000. And as we noted earlier, there's about 20% of the current 2.5 million. So, that would put the total budget for your tourism promotion agency just under $1 million, and it would infuse about $250,000 incrementally to the county on an annual basis, which the county commissioners have indicated they're interested in putting back into some sort of a tourism-related activity.
I do have one final comment. So, I will be lending my name to support this. Just for a point of clarification, when he talks about tourism getting about a million dollars, as many of you know, my past life was in the resort business with the Running Y. 20 years ago, we, at the Running Y, spent more than what you're talking about today, just for our resort. Okay? So, we are sorely under-budgeted in tourism, in my opinion, for our community, and this is a step in the right direction. I would challenge you to raise that to 12 or 13%, quite honestly, to get up to the numbers that, when you're competing against the city of Bend at 4 million, Deschutes County at another 9 million on top of that, Jackson County, what they're doing, you know. If we, if we want tourism to succeed, these are the things we've got to do. So, that's it.
And Jim, how much more would you be able to do with the added, or the extra funds?
Mayor, I, it almost, it's a double, really, for the tourism budget. If the commissioners pass that 70% through to the tourism agency, that's at their discretion, certainly. But it provides an opportunity to support events, infrastructure projects, and communities countywide. And it just, to be honest, it just allows the tourism agency to play at a higher level than what we've been able to do for the last 10 years. I, I would anticipate that almost all of that would flow through. Currently, we run that $500,000 budget with a GNA of 30, we try to, we target 30%. So, I would imagine our GNA as a percentage of the total would go down, really, and our, our marketing tends to be roughly 50% of that total budget. So, that percent should be able to go higher. So, most of these dollars will go flow, flow through to working promotion.
Well, excellent. You're, you're doing a great job, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Public comment. So, we do have one person in here that would like to come up and speak, Michael Jackman. And if you could just, we've got your name, and it's three minutes.
I'm just approaching City Council tonight. I'm normally a cab driver, and the vehicle for Iraq kind of crushed me, and I'm just asking the council's permission just to get back in a cab. I realize that I have an extensive criminal record, but that record, I haven't been in any trouble whatsoever in almost 12 years, and I'm just asking the council's permission to get my job back. Got phone? And I've got the support of my boss, all my bosses, and I just want my job back.
Okay. Any questions?
First off, I'm sorry about your job loss, sir. I want to make sure that's clear. But for the council's information, we did receive information, and I'm sorry, I did not get your last name, sir.
Jackman.
Jackman. Mr. Jackman had reached out earlier this week, and so I did research the act that he's talking about, and unfortunately, the way that it is written, the council doesn't have a lot of discretion on this one. There is not an appeal process, and I'm sorry for that. Although, there was, there was something that he shared with us that I would need to look at separately, but as far as the council action is concerned, you're not able to take action to suspend the ordinance in this situation, just from the way that it's written, and I am sorry for that, sir.
Is there a way that you could refer to your district attorney, or is that all?
I'm working on that now.
That's why I need to talk.
And that was actually something that I was going to be looking into. So, I just wasn't sure if you wanted to discuss it at this time or not, but yeah, that is.
Do you have a card?
I can email it to him. I have the information. Do you have an email, sir?
I'm sorry?
Do you have an email that you want to put on the paper?
Yes.
To our city attorney, I don't know if there's anything possible we can do, you know, after 12 years with no other offenses, you know, anything we could do.
And that's, that's just it, is, as I recall, and this is what I need to look at, because when he said 12, I think the ordinance talks about a seven-year lookback. So, the 12 may be beyond it, but it also depends upon some other things. So, I'll need, that's what I need to look at. I thought it was more recent than.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on anything that is not on the agenda for this evening? No. Okay. Just a moment. You'll have to come to the podium. Just a moment. You have to, just, just a moment. You have to state your name.
My name is Henry Elder. They call me Hank. I'm the general manager of Access Taxi.
And Hank, I'm going to give you three minutes, okay?
I'm sorry, ma'am. I have a really bad hearing.
I'm sorry. Three minutes. We're going to give you three minutes.
I just would like to speak in tablet with Mr. Jackman. I'm here representing Access Taxi. Unfortunately, our owner is in the hospital with pneumonia, was unable to be here. The gentleman has been an exemplary employee since his work for us. He's, we've had him in management positions. We've had, I've never once had a complaint of any kind from Mr. Jackman. I, I, I didn't hear too much what you guys were saying, but I was told that this is something you guys are unable to take, to change, or anything. I don't know what other virtue, or what other way we can go about maybe trying to get things cleared up for Mr. Jackman. But, you know, if anything, like I say, he's an exemplary employee. I'd like to have him back in a car. I mean, he's a gentleman that, as soon as he gets in a car, the gentleman's going to be the assistant manager for my company. That's the kind of gentleman he is. That's the kind of worker he is. That's the kind of dedication he has for my company. You know, I, I, I'm hoping that what I'm saying is helping out a little bit. You know, I, I really need the gentleman to come back to work, again, he's really somebody that can help us keep the company working like we've been doing. You know, I, I understand that you guys really don't have much control of it right now, but I'm, I'm hoping that maybe if there's anything, you know, I can leave my number or whatever, anything we can do to help things, try to get things cleared up with this gentleman. You know, I, I realize people have a past, but you know, the situation that's going on has been over 20 years ago, with this problem that he's had. But since then, like I say, I know the gentleman real well. We're very close friends as well. He's, I've worked side by side with him all through this coronavirus. It's just me and him working at night, you know, so the gentleman's a great worker. Like I say, I don't know if this is doing any good to help it out, but I'm trying to do my best to get the gentleman back to work.
Okay, very good. I think they're talking out there, and thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing and hearing, Nathan, is there anybody else on?
No, the only, the people on there are actually our consultants for the wastewater.
Okay. At this point, we will close public comment. Maybe we can close the door.
Madam Mayor, can we take just two or three minutes to give?
Yes.
Thank you.
I was going to suggest we either close the door. Okay. Okay. Number five, Consent Agenda. Action 5.1, Approval of the Consent Agenda Meeting Agenda, and Items 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5. 5.2 is Quarter Budget Analysis Report for 2019 to 21 Biannual Report. 5.3, Authorization to Submit a Transportation Growth Management (TGM) Grant Pre-Application and Application to Be Used to Help Update the Data Urban Area Transportation System Plan. 5.4 is Upgrade the Programmable Logic Controllers for the Wastewater Collection Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System through the Automation Group Incorporated as Integrator of Record in the Amount Not to Exceed $35,808. And 5.5 is Consultant Service Contract with Tetra Tech Incorporated in the Not to Exceed Amount of $41,112 for the 2018 American Water Infrastructure Act Emergency Response Plan. And, and I will just need a motion. Unless you have a question on any of these. Let's get Robbie.
And, and he also would like that read into the record, the whole act, please.
Almost Robbie.
Welcome.
I didn't hear the question, but I know there is a question, so.
Very briefly, what's, what is the American Water Infrastructure Act?
The American Infrastructure Act, it expanded on the 2002 Bio-Terrorism Act. Basically, it was signed along with the 2018, and it expands on Risk Resiliency and the Emergency Response Plan. It's an update to any of our emergency response plans or risk resilience equipment we have in, in that. It was a federally mandated program that basically required us to look at any risk and resiliency, excuse me, look at any risk that we may have had with the water system, both physical and cyber, and then form the second part, which is the Emergency Response Program, which is basically a follow-up. So, the Risk Resiliency was addressing any issues we may have had, like I said, both physical and cyber, and the ERP is the response plan as how we would act if we had those issues. The first part was due, it, excuse me, is due by July. We were able to finish that up fairly early. Had some extra money left in the budget, decided to start with this ERP, which is actually scheduled for next year, to be due at the end of this year, and we wanted to get it early start on and get it done, because they're both required to term then by June for the Risk Resiliency and January 1st for the.
Counselor Andrews.
Yeah, the only question I had was, if we get federal funding for the American Cares Act, and that money can somehow be used for this, is, can that be done after the fact?
We, we need to pull that from the consent agenda if we're asking as many questions on it, right?
All right. Well, we can just, if, I'll have to research. Those, the rules have not yet come out on the newest money, so I don't know. We're supposed to get those within 90 days.
Okay. All right.
Any more questions of Robbie? West, thank you.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All righty. Number six, Legislative Actions. 6.1, A Contract Award for the City Audit Service Authorization to Execute a Contract with KDP Certified Public Accounting LLP. And we have Jessica Lindsay reporting.
Good evening. In January, we put an, out an RFP for audit services. We had two responses from our current auditors, Marina and Company, and from KDP. A team of three individuals from our finance division rated these. Though Marina rated slightly above, at 1.5 points above KDP, they have been our auditors for seven years. We had a, a contract with them for six years. We did a one-year extension because of the COVID. It would, it would have been very difficult to change auditors this year, but hopefully that is past us and this year. that is past us, and this year, having a new auditor will be fine. We feel like it's best, best practice to switch auditors at this point, so though Marina did rank higher, we, we feel like we should go with KDP to get some fresh eyes on our books. You have any questions?
Questions, comments?
No, just, it sounds like a good plan. I, I think, last time we changed auditors, right, they did, just a new set of eyes, just helped refine and made things a little better, so.
Yeah, the Government Finance Officers Association said to, best practice is to do at least a five-year contract that, because it takes a while to become familiar and for them to recoup their costs, because the first year costs are very expensive, and then after that, when you set your contract year and they recommend, whenever your contract is, to go out for a new one. They do recommend, like, if Marina and Company applied, and then there was other auditors that were not government-focused, they didn't have the government accounting experience, then it's best practice to stick with Marina, but since this, these other auditors do have quite a bit of government accounting experience, we have chosen to go with KDP.
Just a point of clarification, you said five points, five out of how many total points?
What was it? So, have it here. So, they have a, there's a maximum of 65 technical points, and then 35 points for price.
Okay, so.
There, there was only 1.5 points apart.
1.5?
Yeah.
Yes.
I apologize, thank you.
Yes, oh, sorry, I didn't hear, I thought you said.
I, well, I thought I heard five points, so that was, thank you.
Yeah, 1.5, yes, there were.
Makes sense, thank you.
I would move to authorize the city manager to execute a consultant services contract with KDP Certified Public Accountants LLP for city urban renewal agency audit services.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 6.2, update to the city airport rules and regulations, Airport Director John Barcel.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So, the airport's rules were updated a couple of years ago. We missed an item by putting the insurance requirements back in. We had, they were in previously, and we forgot them when we did the update, and so we'd like to put those back in. We sent out the rules and regs to all of our tenants and received no comments from anybody. So, I'm assuming, and most of the tenants, or all of the tenants, as far as I know, are still providing their insurance as if nothing happened, so this is just catching up on something that we, that we missed previously. We, it's our intent to update the rules and regs every couple of years, the last time they were updated was 2002, prior to a couple of years ago, so that was a long, that was too long to wait. Any questions?
Questions?
I move to approve the update to the city airport's rules and regulations.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. 6.3, contract amendment number nine with Slayden Constructors Incorporated for Phase Two of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade in the not to exceed amount of $1,993,923. And we have Chris Claymore.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here tonight to bring you the next phase of construction for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project. Phase two construction will bring updated plant water pumps, replacement of the outdated return activated sludge, sludge pumping system, new gates on the chlorine contact basin, and various electrical and communication improvements throughout the plant. The city will also be tasking Corolla Engineering with performing an evaluation on dechlorination to meet new DEQ permit requirements that are fast approaching. I'm asking for the approval of amendment nine with Slayden Constructors in the not to exceed amount of $1,993,923. Do you guys have any questions tonight?
I'll make a motion. I move to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number nine with Slayden Construction Inc. for the Phase Two construction guarantee maximum price for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades project in the not to exceed amount of $1,993,923.
Just for a quick point of clarification, this is addition, is this addition to the original contract amount?
Yes.
So, so this, this is phase two. So the first phase, which was amendment eight, where the headworks, they're currently working, this is that next part, so we authorized that to move forward earlier as we were still working. So this is the next portion, this was always in the plan, it's always been in the estimate you've seen, but, yeah, you're, you're awarding them as we go.
Okay, got you.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
6.4, construction service contract required excavating over the city cook, Street Sewer Replacement Project, in the not to exceed amount of $180,235 plus additional contingency allowance of $11,824. Director Scott Souder's review.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So what we have before you is another short segment of our sewer conveyance system upgrade projects. This is a small segment on Cook Street, over off of California Avenue. It's roughly 285 feet in length, it's a existing six-inch clay sewer pipe that's failing due to root intrusion and, and fractured pipe segments and a belly in the pipe, pretty typical for what we've been bringing in before you. We received bids on January 28th, we had three contractors provide bids for the project, with Bob's Excavating being the low at $118,235. Total anticipated design plus construction cost for this project, including a 10% contingency with tonight's approval, would be roughly $164,800. The fiscal biennial budget for 1921 allocates $110,000 for this project. The balance of the funds is available from the unutilized allocation for the California Pump Station Rehab Project that was, that was, has been postponed. So with that, staff would recommend Council, option number one, to authorize city manager execution of a contract with Bob's Excavating in a not to exceed amount of $118,235 plus authorize an additional $11,824 contingency. Is there any questions?
What, what's the projected life? What would the projected life of that? 20, 30 years?
No, more than that, yeah.
50?
Probably closer to 50 years, yeah.
Okay.
Or 300 years, based on calculation of how long our systems has, based on our budget.
Okay. Okay.
The new, the new pipe should last longer than the, the clay sections, the way they used to work them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll move to authorize the city manager to execute a construction services contract with Bob's Excavating Inc. for the Cook Street Sewer Replacement Project in the not to exceed amount of $118,235 plus authorize an additional 10% contingency allowance of $11,824.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. 6.5, construction service contract with Rocky Mountain Construction LLC for the Clamath Commons Parking Lot Project in the not to exceed amount of $93,050 plus additional contingency allowance of $10,185. And we have Scott Souder's reporting.
Thank you. So this is a, a parking lot in our downtown, is kind of putting the final touches on the Clamath Commons Park. As you know, let's see, when was it it was in? This, yeah, just this last February. So on February 16th, Council accepted the dedication of the park from Sky Lake's Medical Center for all of the park improvements, as shown in the, the exhibit that's before you, including those portions of the improvements on the city property and the portions on the Sky Lake's property that they had acquired, plus they dedicated that land to the city. In the northwest corner of that property, there is an existing parking lot, an unimproved parking lot that's been there for years, and the intent all along has been to improve that parking lot and make it part of our downtown parking district inventory. Last October, the downtown parking district expanded north, which actually ended up incorporating this area, so this parking lot is now within the downtown parking district boundaries. In anticipation of this, staff prepared construction documents to provide a, a new parking lot in there, including end caps, surface lighting, and landscaping. That project was put out for bid to three, it was locally put out for informal solicitation to three local contractors. Only one contractor submitted a bid to us, and that being Rocky Mountain Construction. Their base bid was $93,050, $93,050. Total anticipated project expenditures for this project add up to approximately $103,200, including a $10,185 contingency allowance. Funding is available in this year's fiscal biennial within the downtown parking district for roughly $107,000. So with that, we would recommend that staff approve the project and award Council Option One to authorize city manager execute a contract with Rocky Mountain Construction for $93,050 plus authorize an additional contingency allowance of $10,185 for the project.
Councilman Dodson?
With that. This, this is like a complete tear out?
Correct.
And regrade?
Correct. So prior to Sky Lake's offering it to us, we went through some environmental studies on the property, and actually, they ended up finding some, that's a former gas station at that location, and so they, just like every other corner in downtown, or laundromat. So they did perform cleanup on that, and then we ended up getting a clean Phase One on the property. So it's complete tear out, this, all the asphalt's going to be removed, there may be some existing underground impacts, some, some structures, instructions under the ground might be there. We have an additional $800 that's within that contingency to deal with those, should they encounter them. Yeah.
Just moments.
Seeing a little steep, right, I mean, not, it's not like way out of line, but it feels a little.
Price-wise?
Yeah.
Um, I, not based on what we've been seeing lately, unfortunately, I mean, we had, we had performed some final number crunching, our, our engineer's estimate, we, we intentionally went in low with our engineer's estimate for that purpose, because when we priced this out, you know, three years ago, it was quite a bit lower. But based on current numbers that we've been seeing for this type of stuff, that we actually anticipated it to be slightly higher than that, closer to the $95,000 range.
I think my only other comment is because I, you know, we were here last time talking about the Christmas tree, so people talk to me about the Christmas tree. The, the grass is much more parker location than parker.
Yeah.
So, I don't think you need to point out for that.
No, so we, so we tried it, and I, I've received that feedback a couple of times. We'll probably get into that in some more detail when we get closer to Christmas.
And Councilman Andrews?
Yeah, I just want to, doesn't, doesn't asphalt in that cap any environmental issues below it? Isn't that the way that you can solve?
You, you can, but in this case, there were some tanks in there, and so those tanks were removed and cleaned up. There, there may be some additional lines and things that are in there, but we got a clean bill of health on them.
But, but liability-wise, that's how, that, isn't that how you cap off a site, is by throwing asphalt like that?
It can be, mm-hmm, it can be. Yep, it can be.
So, this would, this not only helps us for parking, but it also prevents us for future potential issues.
Yeah, I mean, they, technically speaking, we receive a clean bill of health on the property, so they did do the cleanup.
Right, but in case something.
But, you're correct, there are some other properties that that has been a, a trend in the past, is to, to cap them with asphalt for underneath parking lots.
If I'm, if I might, this, this site actually had a very extensive environmental, it's a gas station on that corner, a dry cleaner in the middle on Main Street, and then another gas station on that end with auto repair and store on this other end. So, this site has had just about every bad thing we, we find in environmental, so the fact that it's been reused and is in good shape is, we think we may find some structures, either concrete or, or some piping under there, but the tanks are gone.
Are you going to allow for electricity for a food court, or a food cart, or something there?
The light poles, I believe the light poles have outlets on them, so there's, and there's, and there's a, there's additional opportunity up near the, the restroom that's there, there's some, some electrical opportunities in there as well, yeah. And then the, the design also, Sky Lake's is, if you'll recall, one of the conditions of the conveyance is they would, they want to put signage on the two corners, and one of those signs is on that, that top right-hand corner in there, so we have electrical conduit going over there for lighting and things like that.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, I move that Council approve option number one.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Under other matters, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I had asked, sent you some information over the last few days. The, near the wastewater treatment plant where we're working, there is a well, and that well, it's a city well, but it is used exclusively by IFA to, to irrigate their, their seedlings. And we're, we're having some issues as we're building the plant, it's, it is, I'm going to show you a picture here in a second, so you can see where we're talking about. This won't have the treatment plant being constructed, but I'll try and point that out to you. Give me a second here. Share screen, there. Okay, so, the new headworks are going in about right here. Very significant excavation and work that's gone on, they're starting to now do the backfill. The wellhouse is this little building right here. It appears it was drilled sometime in the early 90s, maybe to get water to that side. When IFA came in in 2001 era, the city really doesn't use this well, and so I, I think it was offered up as some sort of incentive. We paid about $90,000, they paid something close to 50 to help rehab the well, run the piping over to their, their facility here, and then they used that. It, while it will fit there, it is somewhat in the way, so they had asked us if there was a, an opportunity to move it. It is a city-owned well, and so in order to start that process, I wanted to get your take, one way or the other, if you want to do that.
Move it on to...
Well, there's, there's a couple of things. If, if they want to move it onto their property, that, that becomes somewhat complex, because it's a city well. This is a railroad right-of-way right here. If you go in, there is a section of track right over in here, if you walk it, the rest of it, there are no rails left anymore. There are some things going on with the Timber Mill Shores Association trying to acquire this right-of-way, this railroad right-of-way comes all the way up in here, we have a road eventually coming here, so we're, we were talking with them about trying to get this. We may be wanting to talk to the railroad about trying to acquire back to this point. That's not a quick fix. So it could be that we move the well over there, we move it to the edge of our property, so it's not right next to the headworks. That was their request. I, I do think there are some, the headworks backfilling will be finished in the end of April, is the current schedule, and then there isn't any other excavation to that extent near this well. And so, trying to, trying to respond to their request.
City, city.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay.
Councilman Andrews?
So, it's an exclusive well, right? Could we not, I mean, is it the, the well, the right to the well is what the value is to IFA? Could we not just sell them the well if it's exclusive and then get out of this business?
That, that, that becomes a water rights question, so it's tied, it's tied to the city water right, and I don't know, I mean, certainly the water right has a value.
Right.
We went out and perfected that sometime in the early 90s. You know, if, if we had a water... You know, if, if we had a water pinch, you could divert it not from here, we could put it over to Conger, to an existing well, and, and draw more water from those. So, I, yeah, I hesitate to give up a water right in an area where it's very difficult.
Okay, and then the second question, isn't there some issues of drilling a well within a mile of, a new well within a mile of the water?
That, that could be something that comes up in this process. Again, this was their request. If, you know, so part of this would be they would have to go out and do some legwork to see what, if it's possible. Again, within a mile of the, of the, a body of, a body of water now, it's, it's very difficult. You're, we are above the area here where the calls happen, so you don't get the same, you're not, not regulated in the same fashion, but you are, you are subject to regulation because you're within a mile.
I have one more, but if you want to go.
Go ahead.
Then, then the only other concern, or I think through the process, their concern regarding this well is because it's, it's, it's coming up with some sediment, right? So, what happens if we drill a well 300 yards away and we're, we get the same issue?
So, we, we do have a contract with IFA. It's, it's, we sign them, appear to sign them every five years, memorandums where they, they agree. The maintenance for that contract, and I know Mike spent a lot of time looking at it, falls clearly to them. We used to be in the business, I think, of even running their electric meter, but I think they now do that. There are filters they could put on, and there, there are some other things that you can do. I don't, I, my take is they want us to do that, but I don't know that that's our obligation to do that.
And Councilwoman Blaine?
Yeah, a couple of things. I definitely would not be interested in transferring a water right that the city has. I, I think the right-of-way with the railroad, I've worked with them before. It's, it's hard just to get someone to respond to you. So, that may be an option that we can pursue, but that wouldn't happen, I would even guess, within the next year.
It's, it is owned jointly by Union Pacific and Burlington Northern.
Oh, that'd be even better.
So, yes, I, I have a conversation this week with Rob Shaw specifically about trying to work on that. So far, our luck is if we get UP to pay attention, BNSF won't, and when BNSF pays attention, the UP person we're working with is gone. So, it's been, it, my guess is it's multiple years before we actually get that.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, so my question also centers a bit on the sediment that you had given us some information about. And you mentioned the backfill will be done in April. Is there any tie to that backfill and the potential sediment? Is that something that we can wait until at the end of April to see if that well clears up? Is that something that's been brought up at all?
Certainly, I think where their, what their concern was is their, their filters were filling up quickly, and they're worried about it clogging their heads. They use a very fine mist. It is a Geo well, so that is hot water, and, you know, that, they, we haven't yet viewed the casing. We met out there with a, a well person, and I think, actually, I think Chris may have been the one who met with him. He may have some more, but anybody who owns a Geo well knows that they don't last as long as a regular well. So, I'm, I'm not sure what the condition is. In, in 2000, we replaced it with a 15-inch casing, but I don't know what the condition of that casing is.
So, have they made an ask, or are you just looking for direction?
They, they did ask if they could move the well, and so I said I would bring it up.
But, I mean, I guess the next question is who's paying for that? And if it's the maintenance on the contract, they would be paying for that?
Well, I think that's, that's the big issue, who pays for that? Our... I, I don't know how you justify the city taking on a, a couple hundred thousand dollar expense to do that. I don't know how you can do that with your citizens, but...
No, can I get the sense that they would like it to be?
I, they haven't asked, but I'm guessing they would ask.
Well, from my standpoint, the answer is probably not. Can you rate the well on a, from one to 10? Is it an excellent well or just a...
I'm going to make Mark, Mark's been doing some research on this, it was his homework assignment, so...
The answer is probably no, I couldn't rate it on a one to 10 scale. It's not something that has a use for us at the wastewater treatment plant. We do use a very small amount of water for some rinsing off of equipment over by our compost facility, but it's out of convenience, it's not something we need. If it was something we had to spend money on, we would abandon that and run a plant line over, or just rinse off our equipment somewhere else. So, it's not something, again, that, that is of any, the water right has some beneficial use, the well itself right now does not.
The weather is no use to anybody except IFA.
Correct.
What about though the building slab? Have we, have we contributed to the building slab? It says subsistence in the building slab.
I don't know the answer to that. They had noticed that, at one point, that it looked like it might be settling. I heard one piece of anecdotal information from someone who's been here a long time that said it has been settling for some time, or it's been that way. I don't know that for a fact, I can say one way or the other. We did, we asked Slayden if they'd be so kind as to at least take a shot on the building and then monitor it, see if it settles more. But, that just happened recently, so...
And do you think it's because we're working over there?
I couldn't speculate, I don't know the answer to that.
But, we are working over there.
Right, yeah, right next to it. Yeah, in fact...
The headworks is just right there, this, this building is, headworks probably cuts off about right there. There, there's a lot of equipment driving around there.
So, we possibly are contributing to this.
Yeah, the, again, the hard part is it's, it's, it's a, it's a well on our property that we don't need the use of. So, whether, if it was, if nobody else was attached to it, we just move, we would move on.
I appreciate your, the number one, you know, your option number one, because you're thinking about as the community grows, that could be something that could be very important, that well. Is that correct?
Yeah, certainly the water right. You hate to give up a perfected water right, especially in a community that struggles with water. And so, you know, transferring ownership completely to IFA, my professional opinion is you would not want to do that. Where it's physically, I don't know why they drilled it there, there's, I don't...
If I remember correctly, and I, I could be wrong, so please forgive me this, I'm told not to speculate, but I'm going to anyway here. I, I remember hearing some discussion that might have been used for irrigating the log decks back in the day when it was the mill.
Okay, so it might even be older than the 90s, it might have been there for a long time. At one point, we, we looked at it for maybe using it as co-gen makeup water, we've talked about that, but since it's geothermal, we don't need to add any heat into our wastewater system since they're going to make us control for that, so we, we scrapped that plan.
And also arsenic, it's loaded with arsenic?
I don't know what the, if it has it, but it's Geo.
Yeah, it was a...
Probably.
Point, point, 10, microgram, micrograms or milligrams per liter, so it does have arsenic in it, but forgive me, I can't remember the concentration of how relevant that is.
Right.
In, any, almost all of our Geo wells have something in them.
Right.
Hot water is amazing for that.
And as far as the settling, I mean, I'm thinking, could we offer more filtration till it settles? Do you think it'll settle so that they can use it through their misters?
Again, I don't know the exact reason of why, what, what's, what's causing the settlement. It's, could be or could not be something related to construction. I guess something could be put on, it's just a matter of, again, who, who's responsible for paying for that.
Right. And Councilwoman Blaine?
Yeah, I, I feel like this should be IFA bringing a proposal to us that's actually more in-depth than we want to do the well. I mean, Todd Smith or Councilman Andrews made a good point about within one mile, can you even put that in? I know on Chillicothe or Little Lamont, oh my gosh, Williamson, you cannot, I don't know about here. But, I feel like that's legwork that really they should be bringing to us.
We know just from some history, our well, our Wocus well, which is up in this area, was subject to one of the early calls. I think most of that calling is happening north of Upper Klamath Lake because the city's main well field, which is right here on Conger Avenue, is not subject to that call. I don't know, but I do know if you're within a mile, you are subject to, to regulation, and they can turn you off. It's one of the reasons we've, have actively as a city been looking for some other wells that might be, well, will be at least a mile away, so we don't have to worry about that.
Councilman Dodson? Any thoughts? Okay. Councilman Andrews?
No, I'm wondering.
Okay. As far as direction?
I, I like what your recommendation, they should bring, bring in the proposal to us for consideration.
With an eye towards why the tax, if they're proposing, the taxpayers fund it, right? Justifying that.
Okay. I will reach, if, if that's, I see three of you, or, so I will reach back to them and ask them to bring, prepare and bring something more formal to the city and, and explain what they want to do. That'll work.
However, you did bring up the question of the railroad right-of-way. It means it does take for ages to give it, don't you think we should start now or just...
We, we, we are actually, without, without formal, we're, we're trying to establish the, the connection. I should say, the UP, they're not, he's not the decision maker, but the one who we interact with, at least still today, is somebody I actually graduated college with. He came in and his hair is completely silver, and he's looking at me, and I thought, God, he looks familiar, and he goes, you look really familiar. And we started talking and realized we'd had multiple classes together. But, as, at that time, his hair was black. And he did say that, but, so I do know him, we've had some good conversations. It's really been trying to get Burlington to engage with us, but Rob Shaw and I are meeting this week because he has an interest on his property, see if we, if we approach them together, can we get some sort of action? I will say the railroads typically will claim they, they don't own it. What are you talking about? If we're asking him, hey, you need to clean, hey, we don't own it, and then, until you want to do something with it, and then they're right there, Johnny, on the spot, we own that, what are you doing here? So, I'm trying to figure out how to get them to come to that moment and say, hey, we own that, and we'll say, perfect, let's talk. But, we aren't, we aren't starting. It might be.
Okay, adjournment. If there's anything else, anything else on other matters anybody wishes to discuss?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you.